That we can move on to the business at hand, which includes taking the last of the business of 2023, 2023, and concluding that. And we'll start with the salary board approval of the minutes for the year 2023.
Motion to approve the minutes from 2023?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion or deletions or additions or corrections? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved. And we'll seek an adjournment, sign a die.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we'll convene the Board of Assessment under. And we'll suspend our meeting and move on to Board of Assessment with your statements.
Okay. So first, let me pull that to the top. I would accept a motion to approve the minutes of the 2023 assessment appeal hearings.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there any other business to be brought before? Do we have to elect the officers, I believe?
That comes next. This is just adjurating, sign a die.
Oh, okay.
Finishing out the year.
Alrighty. Is our motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
We'll reconvene the meeting and under the Board of Elections, we'll approve the minutes of the meeting of 2023.
Motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions or comments, deletions, additions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. So moved. Now we'll go to the County Board of Minutes for.
Adjourn.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Adjourn, sign a die.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? Not, we stand adjourned for that part of the meeting. We'll move on to the County Board for approval of the minutes of the December 28th, 23 minute.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions or additions, deletions?
Will you give me a second to go get a cover sheet? I don't think I have one of those. And that's what's throwing me off.
Choose a motion.
Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
You took care of that.
Oh, we did. Yeah. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Now we'll adjourn, sign a die. There's a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll go into the organizational meeting. Okay, so we will look for a motion to appoint a chairman of the Board for 2024.
Motion to appoint Mr. Phillips?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, so moved. Now we'll seek a motion to approve the vice chairman of the Board for 2024.
Make a motion to appoint Commissioner Kuhn?
I'll second the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved. Now we'll seek a motion to approve the secretary of the Board.
Make a motion to approve Commissioner Litz's position?
I'll second the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved. Now we want to appoint Mr. Wogomuth as county administrator for 2024.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved. And we need to move or get a motion to approve our solicitor for 2024, Matthew J. Bugley.
Make that motion?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, so moved. Now, this is a motion to approve, appoint all the employees of the county payroll to their respective positions effective December 24th, 23, for the year 24.
Make a motion to approve all of the existing county employees on the payroll?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved. Now we'll move on to the schedule of our meetings for 2024, which has been attached to your minutes or your packets, and look for a motion to adopt the schedule.
Motion to adopt that schedule?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Second.
Okay. Now we'll move on to liaison chips. I've proposed a few changes. Everyone has a packet or should I read? I'll read the new list as I'm proposing. These are the liaison chips for 2024, and I will continue with Community Action Partnership, Commission on Drug and Alcohol, Department of Emergency Services, the Expo Center, Penn State Cooperative Extension, IT, City of Lebanon, and Area Agency on Aging. And I'm proposing for Michael Kuhn. He'll continue with the Lebanon Valley Destination Marketing Organization, United Way, Economic Development, and Lebanon Transit, and Mental Health, Renova, Children and Youth, Governor Dick, and I'm proposing adding elections and planning to Mike's liaison chips. And Commissioner Litz, continue with assessment, Conservation District, Geographic, GIS, Commission for Women, Veterans Affairs, the WIB, Building and Grounds, Chamber of Commerce, and the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. So those are my proposals for '24, and I'd seek a motion to adopt those.
So moved.
I'll second the motion. Any comment or question?
I do have a question. With these changes, have you checked out when the dates are and the meetings and things of that nature?
I did not investigate all the liaison chips and all the meetings for 2024. I'll have to admit that I did not do that.
Okay. All right.
Housing and Redevelopment Authority meets on a Wednesday afternoon?
Which Wednesday?
The meeting was next Wednesday, so I believe it will be the second Wednesday. It's early. 3:30.
3:30.
It's, I wished I would have had this ahead of time to chart it out. I, I mean, I can do whatever I'm assigned, except that there are Wednesdays when I have like five meetings already. So if this adds to it, I was looking to move one to another Wednesday, and so this is a little confusing to me because I don't have a calendar or time to check all this out when all these meetings are held. If this one also adds to that same day, I don't know logistically that it's going to be possible, that's all.
So Conservation also meets on a Wednesday at lunchtime, correct?
Yes.
Which Wednesday is that, or is it a Thursday?
It's Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
Thank you.
Okay.
So this is a Wednesday meeting?
Yeah, none of the others on your list, I don't think. A Chamber, I'm not, I don't know when the Chamber meets.
They meet like a Monday at 3:00. Okay, so this is a Wednesday, not a Thursday. All right, I just know those two days get really full, and then if we have assessment appeals and things like that, it could run into that, but it's not a Thursday. Okay. I just needed to talk that out, so I had, it would be, I don't know, I don't want to add to Dawn's, but if they're going to be changed, it would be nice to have those dates that are, so we can evaluate that, that's all.
Well, the liaison assignment, we send a letter to liaison assignment and ask them to coordinate with you for their meeting dates. So if this list is adopted, then you would get, you would have a contact from Karen.
I think she's asking Dawn to give her a preview.
Oh.
That's what I gathered out of that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think that should be, so we can look at that. It just gets a little tight to have everything on the same day.
All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved. Now we'll move on to the part with the depository that we will approve for the year 2024, and you've received a list of those depositories and the list of the accounts within those banks. So we'll seek a motion to approve those for 2024.
Make a motion to approve the depository banks?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any comments or questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved. Now we'll move on to the salary board motions.
These first. These and then these.
What do you want?
Salary Board organized page.
Just.
Right there, in your right hand, I think. Should be right after the depositary. Salary Board organized, you have that?
What's that?
Check behind that one, maybe. Bingo.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the salary board, which includes for '24, the chairman of the salary board, adoption for that motion I need.
So moved.
By virtue of me being chair, it's Phillips.
Oh, yeah. So moved, Chairman Phillips.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved. Now move on to the vice chairman of the salary board. Motion? I'll nominate Commissioner Kuhn for vice chairman of the salary board.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved. Now we'll seek a motion to approve the secretary of the salary board.
Secretary, Commissioner Litz?
I'll second the motion. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved. Now move on to the solicitorship. We have a motion, we'll seek a motion for appointing Matthew Bugley as our solicitor for the year 2024.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Before you go to adjourn, this one. Right. Trying to get this right. This is the one that we, I shouldn't say we, it was me last year.
Okay, thank you for reminding us.
Sure.
Moving on to salary board motions, I have several motions. The first, motion to set the salaries of the employees within the office of the Controller as established during the budget hearings for 2024 or as directed by their current collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Motion to set the salaries of employees within the office of the courts as established during the budget hearings for 2024 or as directed by their current collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Motion to set the salaries of employees within the office of the Pathonatory Clerk of Courts as established during the budget hearings for 2024 or as directed by their current collective bargaining agreement.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
District Attorney.
She's not here.
Oh.
So she's meeting with all the rest.
The catch-all motion later if you'd like.
That's fine.
Motion to set the salaries of employees within the office of the Recorder of Deeds as established during the budget hearings for 2024 or as directed by their current collective bargaining agreement.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Motion to set the salaries of employees within the office of the Register of Wills Orphans Court as established during the budget hearings for 2024 or as directed by their current collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Second. There you go.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Motion to set the salaries of employees within the office of the sheriff as established during the budget hearings for 2024 or as directed by their current collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Motion to set the salaries of employees within the office of the treasures as established during the budget hearings for 2024 or as directed by their current collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Checking.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Motion to set the salaries of all other county employees as established during the budget hearings for 2024 or as directed by their current collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn the salary.
Okay, motion to adjourn the salary board.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Assessment.
Okay, we'll suspend our meeting and move on to the assessment board.
Call the meeting of the assessment board to order, and the first order of business is to nominate the chair.
Nominate Commissioner Litz.
Is there a second?
By virtue of the county code, I will second the motion.
Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, is there a motion for vice chair?
I'll nominate Mike Kuhn.
I'll second the motion. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, I'll accept the motion to appoint Jamie Wogomuth as our administrator to the Board, and no additional compensation for his services. Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then at this time, we're looking to appoint a solicitor to the Board.
I'll make that motion to appoint Matthew Bugley.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We also need to appoint the chief assessor, who is at this time Daniel Seaman. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
Excuse me, are you voting yes for these? I don't hear the.
I was, I really only have to vote if there's a tie, but yes, otherwise.
Okay, I just want to be sure we don't have an issue of split votes and so on. That might come up. Okay, I just, I wasn't hearing an aye, okay.
Motion carries. At this time, we'd like to have a motion to approve that the county commissioners authorize the pay of all necessary expenses incurred by the Board of Assessment, revision of taxes, from appropriations budgeted by the commissioners for such necessary and legal expenditures.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Is there discussion?
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make you aware that I'll be pursuing the, in paneling of a separate group to do the assessment hearings as part of our, it's in our budget for the, next year for '24, and that will be part of the expenses, which will be, you know, something different, but I'll be pursuing that in the first quarter of next year.
Is there a second?
I think it's been moved in seconded. We're in discussion.
Under discussion, I will be voting against that move because I think we are elected to do this job, and the only reason I could see to change it is if you didn't want to follow the law that I was chair. It's the only thing I really chair, and I feel strongly that that is a position. We all had to take certification courses and get certified to do this, and I think we should continue, so.
With all due respect, it's simply that we are doing the assessment hearings and we're also setting the millage, and to me that, there should be some separation there, and that's why I'm looking for an independent panel to do the assessment hearings, and then we could do the, you know, the tax millage issue.
I don't think that that has any correspondence and corresponding negativity, in my opinion, so.
I'm sure.
I'm a no. Okay. Is there a motion to establish the dates, actually? I would.
You need to vote on the appropriations. You were in discussion. I don't think you took a full vote.
You voted no without asking for a yes.
Okay, I thought they already voted. Is there any, let's call for the vote then. All in favor on the necessary expenses?
Aye.
Aye.
And I voted no. So now we're moving on.
I just want to, I just want to be clear. What I had for the minutes was that you stated that you intend to oppose the concept that he, that he spoke about.
He made it part of the motion.
No, I was in discussion.
Yeah, it was in discussion. It wasn't, it wasn't, the motion was just to approve the expenditures.
No, it was just not a vote. That was not part of the.
So I just, I just want to be clear for the minutes, if you were stating your, that you intend to oppose the concept, or if you were, or did you oppose the full motion?
I opposed the full motion because I did not agree with the discussion part because he said that was part of the motion, or part of the budget.
Okay, I just want to be clear for the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, under the hearing dates, I did want to change something there, but I guess we have to get it on the, we need a motion so we can discuss it.
I'll make a motion if those dates are presented.
Second.
Okay, then I would like to ask for an amendment to the motion because we have, again, going to the fact that some of these are held on a Thursday, all on this, at the same time. They're currently the third Thursday, and I would ask that they be moved to the first or second Thursday. The third page does have the list of the dates that are proposed. Would you consider an amendment?
To the first or the second, I, it doesn't really matter to me. I prefer, those are my choices. I prefer the first.
Okay.
Same date for meeting.
And you're willing to amend your motion?
I'd support the first.
Okay, so Commissioner Kuhn, you're amending the motion to the first Thursday?
Yes.
You agree with the second?
Second.
Okay, then the motion and the dates are there. So the motion is to move the assessment appeals to the option of the first Thursday of each month. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Before you go to adjourn, that, I just want to be clear again on the minutes. You had stated that you vote on ties.
Right.
So does that, did you cast a vote for the administrator, the solicitor, and the chief assessor?
I, well, I vote on ties, so, I mean, but otherwise, it's assumed that it's a yes, but.
Well, I'm just asking, should we record a vote in the affirmative for those? You voted to oppose the appropriations budget.
I did, because of the reasons.
And you voted to approve the new schedule, but neither of which were a tie, so I'm just asking if we should record.
But it wasn't changed, so I felt compelled, but I don't think I technically voted on them. I was holding my vote if there was a discussion.
We've just never recorded it that way before, so I don't know.
That's true.
I'm supposed to have a two, you know?
If, we'll ask the solicitor what he recommends, and I will, I'll know that. How's that?
In that, in that situation, would you abstain? I would recommend then maybe marking it as an abstention in that circumstance for purposes of keeping the minutes clean.
Right, otherwise, there's, there's no record of a vote, so.
That's fine, if that's what he recommends.
So you abstained on the vote for administrator, abstain on solicitor, and abstain on chief assessor?
I, yes, I did, yes.
And I want to clear in the minutes that I did not add to that motion, that that was just in the discussion timeframe.
I have Commissioner Phillips stated that he intends to propose that an alternative appointed Board of Assessment for 2024. Commissioner Litz stated that she would be opposed to that concept and then the vote.
As long as it's not part of the motion, I can change the motion.
Correct.
Okay.
Make, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, the election board, we'll convene the election board, and we'll look for a motion to approve a chairman of the election board. Nominate Commissioner Kuhn as chair of the election board.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded. Any questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved. Seek a motion for vice chairman of the election board.
Make a motion to appoint Mr. Phillips as vice chair.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved. Not for secretary.
Motion approved. Commissioner Litz?
I'll second the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved. Anything else to come before the election board?
Chief clerk.
Chief clerk, solicitor, and appropriations.
Sorry. We'll go with the approval of the Chief Clerk for the year, Jamie Wogomuth.
That one's Drasher.
I'm sorry, I'm on the, I, I don't know if I have that.
I think you do. You should have that one back there.
Probably buried it already.
It should have been. You got it?
Yep. Okay, Sean Drasher for 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved. Okay, for Solicitor, Matthew Bugley for the year 2024, for Election Board Solicitor.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved. Now a motion to approve the expenses for the Board of Elections as needed for the 2024 year.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
I know, if I may, I had heard, it actually goes back to the previous vote, but I had heard, I asked for a Solicitor's recommendation, and I want to make sure that that gets recorded in the minutes. I think that will apply to more than just that particular vote in the future.
Move to adjourn the Election Board.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
You stand adjourned, thank you. Does that conclude our business, Chair?
Just adjourn your regular board since you resept it for election. I think that's everything.
Seek a motion to adjourn the, so moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you all for attendance. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
You stand adjourned.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, sir.